Welcome to the Ojai City Council.[4.33][4.33](laughter) Wait a minute, wrong meeting here. Welcome to the Ojai City Council Regular Meeting of February 25th. And I have an announcement. We had a closed session prior to this. It started at 6:00 and it was regarding anticipated litigation conference with legal counsel. And we have an announcement as far as scheduling. And we wanted to announce to you that the public hearing for the wireless site will be before the Planning Commission on March 26th. And that we have told our attorneys to direct AT&amp;T to consider alternative sites. Roll call? Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Clapp?
Present.
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Here.
Mayor Strobel?
Present.
And if Mayor Pro Tem Smith would lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Please follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we go into public communications, I wanted to just give you some quick updates as regarding some issues that have been followed for a while now by our citizens. One is the proposed redemption center on Bryant Street. And that proposal has been officially withdrawn. They will be working for the county to lease a portion of the honor farm on Baldwin for that redemption center. We had a discussion at the last meeting regarding whether the mayor should be in elected or appointed position. That will be on council's March 11th agenda. Regarding Fire Code Appendix L, a joint meeting has been scheduled with City Council and the Building Appeals Board, 6:00, March 25th. I had a lot of these. I didn't realize so many. Okay. The Gables Concept Review, which was placed before the joint meeting of the City Council and the Planning Commission. We had some question about the way we do that. We had people who felt they weren't aware that it was a concept review that was before, that would be before the council and the Planning Commission. So, on a future agenda, perhaps we can discuss if we need to change our policy noticing this type of thing. And that's it. Okay. The next item on our agenda is public communications. Anyone desiring to speak to the council, I would ask that you fill out a speaker card. Limit your comment to three minutes. And I expect order and decorum at all times. I have my first speaker card, and if these are not the order, it's just the order I picked them up. Bruce Canvasser? Bruce?
He was here a minute ago.
Okay, we'll check back with him. Ted Miller?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and thank you for addressing an issue of pressing concern to this community relating to the cell tower. I am delighted to hear that a hearing date has been set and that AT&amp;T is considering alternative sites. But there remains a lot of work to do before that hearing. And I just met with Mr. Kramer and asked him if he would talk to me about how that hearing is going to be conducted, how the record is going to be compiled, how we can make sure that all of the voices and all of the information is marshaled and presented in a thoughtful and helpful way to the Planning Commission when this hearing is held.
Put your mic around it.
Sorry about that. Better? Sorry. When that hearing is held. And I would like to ask, because he said he needed permission to talk to me about that, and I'm not suggesting that I'm going to lobby him about the merits of this. I want to make sure that the community knows what kind of process is going to be conducted, how this hearing is going to be held, how much time we're going to have, where is all the information that's been submitted, and how is it going to be presented? These are very important issues to assure that a fair and complete hearing and a fair and complete record is presented to the Planning Commission so that it can make a thoughtful and informed decision. And I don't know if you're going to be in a position to respond to me now, or if you'd like me to take this up with Mr. Fletcher, or Mr. Clark, or someone else. But I do think that the process would be well-served if we had a dialogue with your attorney about how this is going to go forward. We have, as I've presented to you previously, we feel like we've been ambushed. We haven't had a fair opportunity to be heard. AT&amp;T has had this application for months. They haven't complied with the law. We had three days, then three weeks, and here we are. And we want to make sure that all of the facts get out and all of the anxieties and concerns that this community has over this proposal. And so I would ask that I be given permission, or others who are similarly situated, to reach out to Mr. Kramer or someone else, Mr. Fletcher, Mr. Clark, the new planning director, so that we can be sure that this is conducted in a sensible way, which is ultimately coming to this council if it is not resolved at the Planning Commission.
Okay. I'm going to ask Mr. Fletcher to respond to that, but I'm going to respond also. We just finished a closed session, and much of what we have discussed, I consider attorney-client privilege and would not be available to the public. But that's my impression. Mr. Fletcher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I don't disagree that it'd be worthwhile, in some part, but prior to the Planning Commission hearing, that there'd be some dialogue with interested parties. I'm not so sure whether Mr. Kramer might or may not be the person. I'd always start with staff. But I think it'd be nothing wrong at all, and it'd be a good idea to somehow fold into the process as we're getting the final staff report put together and going through the administrative record, that we engage members of the, interested members of the community. Absolutely, totally fine. I think we can leave it to Mr. Clark and me to kind of work out how that's done, to make sure it's done in a timely fashion, so folks get a full chance to give their feedback.
Madam Mayor, I totally agree, and I think it would be a very good thing that someone like Mr. Miller have communication with either Mr. Clark or Mr. Fletcher, to look at the information, first of all, so that staff hasn't missed anything that perhaps should be included in the package, because there's been a lot of written materials that have been provided to us that I want to make sure we don't overlook. And then the other thing is, is I would anticipate that there's going to be several people here to comment on that agenda item. And if there's a way that we can make that more orderly by working with someone like Mr. Miller, I think that would benefit everybody. We want to have a fair, open hearing with everything being heard, but the administrative record that goes to the Planning Commission, we want to make sure that's complete as well. And Mr. Miller may be able to assist us in that. So that would be my, my thought would be for Mr. Miller to have contact with whomever you, two of you believe is most appropriate.
Mr. Miller, I would ask you to contact our city manager, Mr. Clark.
I will do that tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor? If I may comment, also, if I'm correct, staff report's supposed to be completed by a week before, prior to the hearing, right? So would it be fairly soon?
That is our normal practice, yes.
Okay.
Paul Garth?
Mayor Strobel, Mayor Pro Tem Smith, council members and staff, Paul Garth, 609 Kenyatta, representing the Ojai Valley Triad, which is comprised of Ojai Valley CERT, Ojai Valley Amateur Radio Club, and the Ojai Volunteers of the Ventura Chapter of the American Red Cross. I can personally, from personal experience attest to the amazing caliber and professionalism that we enjoy in the Ojai Valley with our emergency services, divisions, and departments, starting off with 911 with the dispatch, and then the Ventura County Fire Department, Ventura County Sheriff's Department, and our local ambulance with Lifeline. Truly amazing individually and collectively as a team. That said, if there was a huge system overload, much like from an earthquake or some major event, that system that's well-honed would need some assistance. And this is where our community comes in, Community Emergency Response Team. The community coming together as a team responding to emergencies. By no means are we first responders. We don't pretend to be first responders, but we can do an amazing job of neighbor helping neighbor and doing the greatest good for the greatest number of people. The CERT training is provided by the Fire Department. It involves fire suppression, cribbing and lifting, search and rescue, instant command system, communications, medical triage. A lot of really good services, the Fire Department says, you know, if you can just handle small fires, that's huge. If you can let us know where you think somebody is trapped, you know, within your local instant command system, that's amazing as well. So the reason why I'm here is because I'm really putting out a call to action, because we are needing a huge amount of people showing up for the next CERT class. And the next CERT class starts Tuesday, March 4, which I think is next Tuesday, a week today. And it is six Tuesday evenings, 6:30 PM to 9:00 PM, at the local ARC in Richmond Center, which is 210 Kenyatta Street intersection with Eliso. The ARC in Richmond Center has been a huge supporter of the Ojai Valley Triad over the years, and they're going to be hosting the CERT class. And the final Saturday is the CERT graduation, and that is on Saturday, April 12th, during the day, let's say, nine to one. And that's going to be at the Fire Training Ground on Alessandro by Seaward. So Ojai is on Tuesday, and Ventura is on Wednesday. So if anybody needs to make up a class, they can go to Ventura. And both classes then combine together on that Saturday for graduation. So, thank you for your time.
And did Bruce Canvasser return? There he is.
Thank you. I'll be brief. By the way, Mr. Miller certainly represents a lot of us, and we've been working in the neighborhood with him, and he's a wonderful person, so that we don't have to have a thousand people bugging you and all that. In talking again to many realtors, they did what I was told today, and actually, I've talked to over 100 people, and they all tell me the same thing. They said, "Well, Ojai is a small community. It's a small, beautiful city. People that come here to buy real estate have different motivations. They work here, they're vacationing here, they're looking for a different quality of life." And she says, "Rest assured," they've all told me the same thing, I haven't begged them to tell me that, "that you're in trouble with your property values, because if people have a choice, a choice, they would prefer not to live within 300, 400, 500 feet of these towers." And that's, and I said, "Well, how do you know that?" And they said, "Well, that's what goes on in real estate. We have to disclose things." So, I know the council has to look at many reasons for and against, and what, and you'll hear a lot, and you've brought in an attorney that is probably very knowledgeable in these things, but because of our unique situation here, it will affect our property values. Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards I have for public communication. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on items not on the agenda?
William Ulrich, 487 Gridley Road. Good evening. For those of you who may not be aware of this, an Ojai Public Works encroachment permit cost for two concrete driveway approaches, this is January 14 of 2014, was $250. The annual encroachment permit for Golden State Water Company is $550. And this for the Golden State's privilege to make Swiss cheese out of our streets and water system. This is a huge revenue lost to the city. Not only adequate permit fees are lost, but inspection fees that are non-existent. These costs should be increased and applied to Golden State and any other utility that regularly damages and subsequently repairs the city's streets and infrastructure. I think that's just reasonable. At a previous public meeting, Councilperson Blatz observed that he had raised at a city council meeting the subject of non-resident planning commissioners. Mr. Blatz indicated that he was persuaded to drop the issue by his colleagues, or perhaps I paraphrase. Mr. Blatz also queried as to where was Mr. Bill Mylie and myself on this issue when it was raised. While I have asserted this issue several times and with some passion, please note that it is not the responsibility of the citizens to confirm that their elected officials are doing their jobs, the job to which we have entrusted them. This seems somewhat burden-shifting, and it is obfuscatory and confusing. And on another issue, please indicate why we still maintain a planning commission that will soon hear the AT&amp;T cell tower application that is of such intense scrutiny when three of the seven planning commissioners are not only not Ojai residents, they cannot vote in city elections. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak under public communications issues not on the agenda? Dale?
Thank you, Dale Hanson. I just want to agree so much with what Mr. Ulrich just said. I really think all of our council members and commissioners, of course, the council members do, but the commissioners should live in the city. If they're going to have input into the laws of the city, and they don't have to come under those laws, that doesn't make sense. Every commissioner should live in the city. And the excuse that we can't find enough people, good people to serve, that doesn't, that doesn't work. We have a lot of good people in Ojai, and I agree with Mr. Ulrich. Thank you.
I agree too.
Madam Mayor, I know it hasn't been very long since this issue came before the council, but I, again, would request that it come back before us for further discussion. Perhaps the public is more aware of the makeup of our commissions now than they ever have been. There was very little, if any, public input the night that we had it on the agenda, and I would like to have it come back before us for further discussion. I'll see what the rest of you think.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'm willing to agree with Councilmember Blatz on that.
Okay, Mr. Clark? Do you put that on a future agenda?
Thank you.
Excuse me, I was sort of contemplating the question. The next item on our agenda is our consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve.
Just a second. Roll call? Blatz?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes. And I'm going to reorder the agenda and take item five, which is enforcement of leaf blower ordinance. The recommendation is to provide direction to the city manager regarding enforcement of the leaf blower ordinance. And I'm going to do that because we have people in the audience who require an interpreter. And so rather than have them wait unnecessarily, we're going to go ahead and take item five now.
And Madam Mayor? I didn't have all the speakers fill out a card, but we could ask and have them line up or something.
Okay.
The interpreter will work with them.
And is our interpreter present?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Interest has been expressed by a couple council members in reviewing the leaf blower ordinance. And we've also heard input from the public, and there's a number of different alternatives that might be considered. One would be enacting a total ban. A second would be allowing leaf blowers, but tightening up the restrictions. And a third would be allowing certain types of low-noise gas-powered leaf blowers in residential zones. That discussion...
I'm sorry, do you want to give her time to translate that? What? I was wondering if she would like time to translate what his staff report is. Would you?
The interpreter has brought simultaneous equipment. If you give me a moment, I will distribute it now.
Okay. And I did distribute the report when the group came in, so they've seen the report.
Okay, so the report has been distributed? It's been, it's in Spanish?
No, but they said they could read English.
Okay.
It's okay.
I think we're going to need that. I love it.
So as I was indicating, in the future, the city council will be considering review of the leaf blower ordinance. The question that's before the city council tonight is, before we do that review, should we continue to enforce the existing ordinance, which we do on a complaint basis? Should we temporarily suspend enforcement of the leaf blower ordinance until you have your review? Or should we continue to reinforce the existing ordinance on a complaint basis, but allow the use of low-noise gas-powered leaf blowers in residential zones on a trial basis in order to assess that technology? So council has requested that this be put on the agenda so that you can receive public input and provide direction to staff.
Okay, I have two speaker cards, but even if more people would like to speak, just come up to the mic. McKinley Barnes?
I have been self-employed in the solar industry for six years, and I also help a landscape firm here in town, so I want y'all to know from where I speak. And I've also lived in Ojai as a renter, and when what I call the blowers would come, it was like shattering to me. It was so loud, and I would leave my home. So I understand the desire to have a quiet Ojai. But I also understand that I very much encourage a serious study to look at this issue, because to make a decision to ban them without a study is potentially debilitating to some of these landscape firms. Their margin of profit is very small. I know that. The cost of the blowers, if electric ones are allowed, would need to be looked at. The longevity of those blowers, how often they would need to be replaced, because they'd be used all day long. How they get charged, if they are charged ones, if they will be plugged into the home where they are, if they were to be plugged in. The issue of carrying a cord between the house and where they're blowing and not knocking over the potted plants and the issues that involves. Making the homeowner angry when that happens. The issue of charging if they are being carried. Because I've worked in the solar industry, I understand about power and wattage and the issue of charging. Where would they be charged? Would they be charged at the homes of these landscapers? Because they're paying a residential rate for their power. So to charge these blowers at their homes would increase their utility costs probably very dramatically. How long does the charge last? I've heard potentially 40 minutes. These folks are out all day long, sometimes two crews, all day. So, to expect someone to charge a blower every 40 minutes means you've got to employ someone to drive a truck around Ojai and Ventura and wherever all day long. Well, Ojai, because we're talking about Ojai. So you've got to insure the truck. You've got to, you know, pay the driver. You've got to pay taxes on all of that. You've got to pay the cost of the charge. Then you've got to buy additional blowers, because you've got people at a job using a blower, depleting its energy. Then you've got blowers being charged somewhere away from where they are. Okay, what about solar? Because this is not green energy we're talking about, charging these. This is coal, or whatever Southern California Edison is using to sell us, to generate their energy. Okay, what about solar? Solar's very expensive, I can tell you. That's been my work for six years. It is costly. And it's not super efficient still. So, the translation of a solar panel to wattage is not super high. And where are you going to put those? Is that going to be purchased by the installer? I mean, the landscaper? Sorry, I'm used to solar as installer. You know, if they're shouldering that cost, that's huge. Are you going to put it on a truck and drive that truck around all day and follow your crews and then recharge from that? How many solar panels can you put on a truck?
Okay, I need you to finish up, please.
Okay. I'm just letting you know. And then the other cost of if we ban them totally, who's going to pay, who's going to pay the cost of all of this? But who's going to pay landscapers to have two or three guys doing one guy's job because they're raking or they're picking it up by hand? I encourage a study, a really deep, thorough study. Thank you.
Cindy Sharp? And let's limit our comments to three minutes, please.
Hi. I'm here to ban the leaf blower. My name is Cindy Sharp.
Address?
902 Drown. Thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of anybody who cares about their health, their sanity, and the environment. When I was a child, we didn't have leaf blowers, and we did fine. People raked, children raked, neighbors knew each other, nobody insulted each other by using two-stroke engines that are much more harmful than automobiles. I always get this, and I know all these people. Les conozco muy bien. Yo no soy su enemigo.
Address the council, please.
I am not their enemy. I am really their friend. Because what I want is for all the gardeners to agree to not use these harmful machines that take the place of rakes.
Thank you, the gardeners.
No, I'm not.
Excuse us.
You are not a gardener, number one. When you blow leaves...
Our speaker is addressing the council.
Thank you.
Please hold your comments. You'll have your time at the podium.
A gardener gardens. A gardener uses techniques that are known since our ancestors were here. They work the soil. They don't blow the topsoil off it and leave it as hard as a rock. Where do the leaves go? In this day and age, do we really have the permission to use fossil fuels to blow leaves, which are mulch and can protect the soil, the important moisture? I walk to school or ride my bike with my daughter every day, and I really resent having these toxic carcinogens blown into my face on a daily basis. And I've approached homeowners, and I've knocked on their door kindly, and I've said, "Do you realize there is a, this is illegal use? We are not enforcing the law." What message does I give them? They can break the law, and it's okay. I call the police now. I've talked to every one of these people individually, and I speak Spanish, and I taught bilingual education for seven years. I am not their enemy, and I don't want them to think of me that way. If they all agree not to use gas leaf blowers, then they're protecting themselves more than me, and we're all benefiting as a community. And on top of that, no one can come in and underbid them and say, "Well, if I don't use it, this guy's going to use it, and they're going to get cheaper, they're going to get the job. I'm going to lose my job, I can't feed my family," and the whole soap opera begins. There are such things... There are such things as rakes. Laziness is not for today anymore. We don't have that luxury. And I appreciate the police, who all know me, because I call them, and I report it, because I'm probably the one complainer, and I know I'm not alone. It's just that people don't pick up the phone. And I call, and I say, "Please come and enforce the law to protect the citizens."
Okay, finish up, please.
I'm not trying to take anybody's job away, but I want them to be gardeners, if they call themselves gardeners, and not spewing toxic fumes, which you can see, on a two-stroke engine, much more toxic than an automobile. I have all kinds of data I meant to email you, which I have now, to show you the harmful effects for everybody.
Finish up, please.
So I am here on behalf of many, many people I know that would like to keep the ban. Thank goodness somebody had enough sense to make a ban. I'd like to enforce that, and I'd like that everybody agrees not to use it, then no one will have to worry about not using it and getting their job undermined and taken away, and the fact that they can improve their health at the same time. And thank you for listening.
That's all the speaker cards I have. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this issue?
Hi. I only want to say one thing.
State your name and...
My name's Alan Thornhill. I live on Ventura Street here in Ojai. And the only thing that I think that I could say that would make any sense, and I would think and hope that everybody would hear this, I have a leaf blower too. I probably was one of the first people in the valley to get one back in the early eighties or whenever they come out. I live underneath oak trees, and from time to time, I've used that thing, although I have, in the last six months, decided I'm not going to use a leaf blower anymore, because after seeing the growth of the use of leaf blowers, the damage that it has done in the valley, the nuisance that it causes, the destruction of our peace and quiet, the toxic next of it, the destruction of the topsoil, which is all, all those things are real. So I've been raking, and I enjoy doing that too. And I also know that everybody has to have a job. I think the people who should carry the responsibility for this would be the clients who hire somebody to come to their house and do this kind of work. And what I have seen, I live here in town, and what I've seen, more times than not, the client is not at home while this is going on. But the rest of the neighborhood is having to listen to it, close their windows, which I do every day. There's a schedule throughout the week, I know which day these people are coming, which day these people are coming, when to close the windows, when it's okay to open them up again, when I can teach music out of my home, and when I literally can't, because it's too noisy. But I think that what we need to understand is just that when we turn a leaf blower on, every time you turn a leaf blower on, just maybe stop for a second and think what that is doing to everybody around you. Because like I said, I have a leaf blower too, but I've decided to not use it anymore. It's an electric one, and I'm okay with it. I like gardening, and I like the quiet. We have a lot of birds, a lot of squirrels, wildlife that lives around our place, and I can tell that they adhere to the peacefulness of it. And I can look around the neighborhood and see where the birds stay away from. So I'm just, I would like to ask if as a community and as a people here in our valley, if we could just look at the leaf blower and just, maybe tomorrow morning, before you turn it on, just look around and remember what's going to happen as soon as you pull the cord, you know, what the neighbor's going to deal with, and get your job done. And I also need to say that I've seen a lot of people over the last couple of years who are more and more being very gracious about that, and I really do appreciate it when I see it. I know a lot of the people here in the valley. I've worked as a carpenter for thirty years here in Ojai. I know a lot of the workers, a lot of people from the lumberyard and the hardware stores, a lot of them by name, a lot of their kids went to school with my kids. And we need to look at how we can achieve peace among all of us here in the valley. And as much as we don't want to admit it, and as much as it is a very touchy subject, and I realize, very touchy subject, it's hard for me to be standing here saying this. Let's just try to find some peace among all of us, and just be cognizant of what happens every time you turn that leaf blower on, and how many people are being affected by it, including ourselves. And my hope is for peace.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to address the council?
Good evening, my name is Luis Ariaga. I was here two weeks ago. And I told you about a group of gardeners. And here they are. I'm missing about thirty of them. The person that just spoke. During three occasions while I was working, he came over. The first time was at 7:00 AM. I arrived to those offices twenty minutes before 7:00. And I had already finished blowing when he came over. And he said... Hey, to something to use the blower. And I said, "I'm sorry." Suddenly, I thought, maybe I made a mistake, may I be arrived too early? I said, "Next time, I'll come later." And I clean that place every two weeks. The next time, it was at noon. I don't know where he came from. Suddenly, I saw him, and he was yelling. And my assistant said, "Hey, somebody's calling you." And it was him. He said, "I'm not letting him work." That he was in his office, and I don't know what, I couldn't let him hear. And I said, "Okay, next time I'll come later." Different schedule. So two weeks later, I came at 5:00 PM. He came over. And I did go across that street that day. And I said, "Look, this is the third time." First time I understood, maybe I messed up, I came too early.
Te dije, "I'm sorry."
I told you, "I'm sorry." At noon, the next time? It was noon. Now, it's 5:00 PM. What is going on? Just like what he said. He's a carpenter. He produces dust and noise. And I thought he lived across the street. He lives a block up and over. He does not live across the street. I don't know why he's complaining about noise and dust when he does that himself. Dust to him. To the other lady, Nancy, or something? That woman. I have gathered about twenty-five signatures that I show you there. My customers have said... None of them have called the police. And just like she told you, she is the one that's calling the police. Many of my friends here, she calls on them, she's reporting on them. She told you herself. I am not lying about this. We also believe that, from what she says... It's not true, because she makes noises with machinery on the weekends. The neighbors have said so. We've heard stuff. I don't know why she's complaining. That's what I wanted to tell you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public wishing to address the council? Limit your comments to three minutes?
Speaking English here. Yes, my name is Casey Cansler, 1222 Sunset Place. Not all blowers are created equal. Echo still makes two blowers that are very quiet, they're gas blowers. The alternative, yeah, the electric blower. Now, we're going to go out and buy generators, so you have a generator on the back of your truck, plus the electric blower making all that noise. I do have a couple of customers that we do not use blowers at all, and they pay for it. Bottom line, it's the cost. You know, do you want to pay more to have it swept and all that? It's time. Still, Echo, if you guys pass it, I don't know if they've had a demo and how quiet they are, when we get our business license, inspect the blowers, put a tag, charge this ten dollars, whatever, a blower. That way, if the police come by, they see the tag on it, they know that blower's legal. I mean, my weed eater, hedge trimmer, are louder than my blowers. You know, it all comes down to finance. How many people in here have gardeners? Do you want to pay a hundred dollars more because it's all done by hand? Probably not. So there's two blowers that are a lot quieter than the blowers that are, you know, a lot of the blowers that are being used. And that's what it is, and not running these blowers at full blast. And we see that all the time. Some of these guys abuse it, and they run it at full blast, dust everywhere, bugs me, I don't like it. So there has to be some common sense. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council?
Yes, thank you. My name is Susan Olson. I live on Thatcher Road. And to echo what the gentleman two times before me said, power tools are not going away. I tease my husband and say, "Every male in Ojai has to have a chainsaw," and they love to use them. The city sends out groups with chainsaws, the county sends them out, there are trash trucks, there's concrete trucks, they're doing some kind of a San Antonio Creek redistribution thing by my house that's going from 6:30 until 5:30 every day, but I understand it's necessary. We have cars that are big enough that they cause all kinds of noise. We have motorcycles roaring through particularly on weekends. Noise is just not going away. So I think that a study to see how we might take this in hand, and with the Echo blower perhaps, that the gentleman was speaking about, because it's a noisy world, and it seems to me, by enforcing the leaf blower regulation, it's picking on the people who are the most vulnerable in our society. And it doesn't seem to me that that's the right thing to do. So I hope that there'll be a study, and there'll be some consideration given to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience?
I'm only here in support of my colleagues. But that second person that spoke... I have a complaint against her. She has mistreated us bad. She's mistreated me and my coworkers. And I don't believe, and I can prove to you, that she makes so much noise Saturdays and Sundays. But I also have another complaint against her. This is a country where... We're all different, from different parts of the world. But she has insulted us so much. She has said things like, "I'm going to call Immigration on you." I do not believe... That that's right, for someone who wants to end the noise. She makes enough of noise herself. She lives next to my client. And she does not complain against her. She has now made herself more vulnerable. She has allowed us to use the electric blower, and when we talk about the other blowers... My blower has a sticker. That says, "It is approved by the state of California." I know that some places in California do not allow that type of blower. But I have used the electric blower by her house. And my electric blower makes so much more noise, and is worse for me than my gas blower. I just wanted to make this comment. I don't feel that it's right. We know her, and she says, "Next time I'll call Immigration." Well, what, how would it be that we'd say to her, "Hey, we're going to do something against you"? That wouldn't be right. That would not be right. We should all be understanding. We are in a noisy country. And that's not going to end, ever. The train makes more noise. Blows a lot of dust. Trucks make more noise than our blower. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? And remember to state your name.
I will. Hi, my name is Abel Carranza. I live in Signal Street. And I own a gardening business in town. I've been doing it for about fifteen, twenty years. And I grew up in Ojai. I raised my family in Ojai. I would like to talk about this matter, you know, I wish to help find a solution to this matter that will benefit both the public and the contractor who's using the leaf blower. I suggest, you know, that educate our landscape, you know, professionals to use the existing, you know, leaf blowers, and follow the rules, cooperate with the city ordinance, such as timeframe, you know, equipment upgrade, proper use of the blower, not, such as not be using full throttle on the blowers, what, you know, what the machine can do. Electric powered leaf blowers are not acceptable to potential for a gas powered machine. Most green industry professionals estimate that electrical leaf blowers reduce efficiency of a fifty percent. They tend to be less powerful than gas leaf blowers, and they are limited to the need of an extension cord. They must be continuously plugged and unplugged. Electrical leaf blowers also can be hazardous to operators, swimming pools, spots, garden pools, and moisture on the lungs. A landscape irrigation may for potential electrical shocks. Problem additional, the heavier duty electric leaf blower, which are compatible in the power of the gas leaf blower. Due to the reduce of noise significantly, finally, noise from electrical leaf blower is compounded by the noise produced by a generator if the electrical outlets are not available. I had done a research, and it's been proven by, you know, one of the university's engineering, and you probably have all, I don't know if there was, past one of those? This has been proved, the leaf blowers are more noise, they have more noise than some of the gas ones. They're louder, they will be used longer. They're still blowing dust, they'll still be using, you know, the only advantage is the emission. We would like to have some time to talk to manufacturers that make blowers and see if there is on the market, one, there will be less, you know, contamination, if that's one of the reasons we're not be able to use the gas blowers. And we can probably have someone from the manufacturers... And we can probably have someone, someone from the manufacturers, you know, such as Steel, Echo, they can be, you know, give us more information about the emission if that's the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? Okay, I think I see two hands out there. State your name, please, and limit your comments.
Deborah Mo El Paseo. I think that a while ago, the Green Coalition stated that raking and sweeping was quicker than blowing, which is, we, I ran that test this week and completely shut that period down. But I think that there ha, I don't know about a study, or I do agree with Abel about maybe giving some time to contact the manufacturers, but I think I'd like to get the complaint, only getting a ticket complaint based off. It's not fair. You know, these people are here because, you know, they are hard workers. There's gotta be some resolution. And I think that having a silencer on it due to the noise might work. As far as the noise, as far as dust, as far as other stuff, the bikers. I live next door to Community Bank. At 6:30, 7 o'clock in the morning, the garbage truck clang, clang, bang, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm just compelled that the complaint based tickets, one person complaining and getting a $300 ticket is not the answer. If there has to be a workshop, have a workshop. But I think Abel made a really good point about, maybe there could be a time period where the manufacturers could be contacted. Have the facts on the table. Maybe there is one that has a low emissions, you know, the Echo, the whatever, anyway. That's all I have, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe I saw one person hold their hand up. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Pedro Parisio. I work for M&amp;M. I'm a manager right there, and then like, they're talking about, oh, and then, you know, talking about the, you know, the electric, and then, you know, last time I was working in a house with electric leaf blower, and I almost knocked down the owner because I didn't see, because I was pulling the cord, and I was like, "Oh, okay, I'm so sorry," you know? "I didn't see you, I'm doing my job." And guess what I did? I called my boss, and then I told him, "Hey, we need a different blower." So, you know, Echo and Steel came up with the leaf blower, and then vacuum, it's a vacuum and shredded, and then I started using that one. And it's, it's making the same noise, but a good thing I didn't knock down the other lady, so I gotta use, you know, the gas blower, you know, and since I was using the electric, I was pulling the cord, so I almost knocked down the lady. So then, we had to change for something, you know, so that's why we changed for gas. Still gonna be noisy, you know? And I don't think it makes a big of a difference, you know, using the, like Abel was saying, you know, it can make a hazard, you know, pulling the cord close to the pools, close to the ponds, children's, you know? I think I feel more safety with the, you know, with the backpack blower or the, or the vacuum, but it's gas, it's, it's gas makes noise, but I feel more safety using that stuff than the electrical stuff, you know? And it's making the same noise, you know? And, you know, people are like little kids, if you leave it on, if you leave it plugged, what happens if a child comes out? It's electrical, you can turn it off with the switch, you know? What about gas? You turn it off, it's hard to pull. Kids won't, you know, that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on this issue?
Buenas noches.
Good evening. Dear brothers, members of the council, I am Joaquin Lara. I live in Oakview, and I've been a gardener
For 28 years.
For 28 years. My reasons are these. There are new types of equipment as far as blowers that do not violate the noise limits. It's not fair to use other ways in order to keep clean places. The use of electric blowers makes more noise. Especially dust. And we could have danger around swimming pools. The emission from blowers is very small compared to all others used around the world. There are a lot of other tools that also make noise. Like motorcycles, weed whackers, trim hedges, etc. I agree that we must have rules for the use of blowers. And that some of us do not use them correctly. I believe that we can work together and reach an agreement. That's why I ask you to abandon this about the blowers until we have more correct information. And I apologize for for the time and the delay. But there are so many ways in which we can work together. I have been very fortunate. In 28 years, only two people have complained to me. After that, I've used blowers that do not make a lot of noise. And I try to use them even at a lower level, especially in Ojai.
Finish up, please.
And I haven't had any problems.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on the leaf blower issue, enforcement of the leaf blower issue?
Good evening. My name is Jaime Robles. I live in 308 Cherry Lane. And I was gonna say that I've been doing yard work for 30 years in Ojai. I've raised my kids here, they went to school and everything. And all these guys here, they just making a living. This is just a tool for work and keep Ojai nice. And I don't think it's fair what we're trying to do to eliminate the blowers, because we use it, we can, we can work with you guys and figure out something, get a solution. And we, we think about getting meetings going and so, so make sure everybody uses it correctly and not wrong way to use it, because that's, one of you guys caused a problem for everybody. And those two guys, we can talk to them and make them use it right, hopefully that'll stop complaints. We use as a solution to keep us working on those. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to the council on the leaf blower enforcement?
Hi, my name is Manuel Castro, and I live in Oakview, 252 Aldis Street. I'm sorry? Hi, I'm Manuel Castro. I live in Oakview, 252 Aldis Street. And, well, I've been after listening to all of this, everyone giving their opinion, you know? I wanted to just, I mean, it's great points, you know, but like, for instance, the, we've talked as a group, and we are willing to work with the city ordinance of the blowers. We are willing to change our blowers for low noise blowers, you know, something that does not make too much noise to, so we can all be happy. And yes, raking, sweeping is an option. But my, 25% of my clients are older people that don't have time for this, or can't, or, I mean, me as a homeowner, I don't wanna spend my weekend or my afternoon raking my house. I'd rather enjoy my family, my girls, and that's what probably most of my clients are, wanna do. And, yeah, we do use abused blowers to some point, or we did at some point, but we're willing to cooperate and make this work. So I'm just, wanted to ask you to please suspend the the blower enforcement. And, yeah, that would, we're willing to workshops, we'll go to workshops to educate ourselves, our staff, to be able to learn how to use, how to properly use a blower. And, yeah, that's, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on the leaf blower issue? No, just one time. Anyone who has not addressed the council?
Hi, my name is Giovanni. I live on 305 Drown. I'm probably the youngest one here, barely getting into the gardening business. And like it has been said many times, we are willing to work with all of you so we can all agree on something, so it won't be such a nuisance to the, to the people of the town, because I've lived here my whole life. I know it's a nice peaceful town, but I don't think the blower is one of the biggest deals causing the noise. It is one of them, but it's not such a big deal. We're just working, we're not going out here on Sundays, which is the most peaceful day, to be making noise. I don't think we're breaking the law. We're working, we're trying to make a money, living, living for our family. Like they said, someone mentioned that they had blown in their face. Whenever I'm using the leaf blower, I'm always aware of my surroundings, when people are passing on their bikes, when people are jogging. I make sure not to blow in their face. I'll turn it off, I'll lower down the volume. When I work at a small office, and there's a lot of leaves, I'll pick up the heavier, heavier of the leaves with the rake, and then the final touch will be with the blower. I just try not to abuse of it. I use it, like I said, for final touch ups. But raking and sweeping is a solution, but sometimes, right now, there's not a big amount of leaves falling, but what about when fall comes? The leaves get heavy, there's a lot of leaves. Sometimes we have to be raking up leaves, picking up leaves from the neighbor's house, because their tree comes over to the property. That's not our fault that there's a heavy amount of leaves. I'm just blabbering on here on and on, but just stating a couple comments. I'm, like I said, I'm the youngest one here probably, and just some things I observed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on this issue? Okay, let's bring it back to council.
I'll start off. I kinda have my, my thoughts broken into three different areas. The first one is the, the ordinance itself, I tend to have a problem with, because here we are focused on leaf blowers, but we don't necessarily legislate against lawn mowers that may make as much noise, or as some of the people have said, chainsaws, hedge trimmers, weed whackers. So, we're really looking at, at isolating the leaf blower, and as the ordinance starts off, it's because of noise. Well, I think we can overcome that, and I think the best opportunity to overcome that is there were some comments that were made, and I particularly liked Casey's idea of having the people come into City Hall for, you know, some type of a business permit and get a tag put on their leaf blower, so we know that that conforms. But I think the, the basic operation of the leaf blower needs to come from the group that's in the audience right now. So somehow, we need to reach out to them, to have them come up with their own solution on it. But I do have a problem with the ordinance basically on its, on its merit itself, because we're isolating the leaf blowers. Because of that, I would be in, in support of suspending the enforcement on the existing ordinance until we can come up with a better idea on how we're gonna regulate these. There are other technologies out there that cause there to be less noise, but if we're gonna start legislating leaf blowers, then we have to legislate lawn mowers, we have to legislate hedge trimmers, whatever is out there that these people are using that makes noise, which all of us use at our homes anyway. So I have a problem with the leaf blowers being legislated individually. But I think we can overcome that, that aspect of it, by working with the people that are in the audience, and I really think that's where the solution should come from, is they know what equipment is out there, they know what works for them, they know what makes their jobs easier, they know what, what's needed to do the proper job for their customers. So I really think that somehow we need to have either an outreach program, or have them get a committee together and come back to us with, with some suggestions on how we can lower the concerns that some of the neighbors may have, but get it, them to, the ones that really know about this, to tell us the way that it should be, rather than the other way around. And until that's done, I would very much be in support of a moratorium on enforcement of the existing statute.
Councilmember Laura, any comments?
Madam Mayor, I really appreciate everybody's comments, and I just would like to stay on record. I do own the landscape business. I've spoken not only to the gardener group, but also spoken to other individuals that are for banning blowers across the board. And I came in the mind frame of not voicing my opinion, or not, but just presenting what's on the books. So, just like to state that for record. I, and I've been talking to our, our city attorney Fletcher, because I don't wanna violate any, any of our statutes right now with conflict of interest. But just looking on the merits of what our blower ordinance states right now, there's pros and cons of just the lack of thoughtfulness and information that's in this ordinance. So, I'm not saying that I approve abandoning, or I'm not saying that I, I rather not have a ban. I'm just saying that I feel that there's more studies, information, new technology that could be introduced. And I think I agree with Councilmember Blatz, because I think that everybody that spoke tonight had a, a point, and they're justified, and I think that if we really wanna work on this, we should work together, and, and that's my position on it.
Mayor Putem Smith, any comments?
Yes, I do, thank you. The other issue, people are saying the noise, to me, the other issue is the pollution. A lot of these blowers just A lot of these blowers just drag up the dust, the various particles of feces, the various elements that are on the ground and push them into the air. My question is, whatever we do, I want a level playing field. If we ban blowers altogether, then basically homeowners in Ojai will know that their gardeners are going to use rakes, they're going to use brooms, and those are the tools that are open to them. I assume that the main part of their landscaping that they're concerned with as far as leaves is lawns, and I won't even go into what lawns mean for Southern California. So whatever we decide it should be an equal playing field, um, it's the pollution, the noise pollution and the actual dust pollution that most concern me. I, in my own neighborhood, I have walked out with the noise pollu- pamphlet, I've spoken to the gardeners, I've shown it to them. As soon as I walk away, they start up the blowers again. Or frankly, one of my neighbors, she said, well, it says only a hundred and fifty feet from this and this and that. She did not understand what the residential neighborhood meant. So I think there is a need for workshops. I'm also thinking, what do people expect? Do they expect their houses to look like some false illusion of what the world looks like, no leaves anywhere? I mean, what is the big deal about having leaves around or as mulch? I, I cannot answer that question. I know we never use a leaf blower. My gardener never uses a leaf blower. The little bit of grass I have, I rake. Ojai is different. I am sure that our gardeners and landscapers would be happy not to use these tools if nobody used them, and the expectation of their customers is they're not going to have a golf course for a lawn. So these are all things, I think what Councilman Laura said, we need to talk about as a community. What are our expectations? I don't want anybody to go out of the landscaping and gardening business. There's plenty of work. The expectation of having a lawn that looks like a golf course forces our gardeners to have to try to get that done in a timely manner. If they really want that and we just ban blowers altogether, people are going to have to pay for rakes and, and sweepers because they're not going to have blow, blowers as a tool if we decide as a group, no more blowers. So I, as I agree, I think we need more workshops on it. I don't want to go out with our noise, believe me, the pamphlet that covers it is not under, it's under a noise restrictions and as Councilman Blatt said, there's lots of gardening tools that cause noise. But to me, the other issue with blowers is the pollution, the air pollution that they bring up, and nobody's mentioned that. So I think it does deserve a workshop, it does reserve people thinking, what do they expect of their lawn? And so it deserves further thought.
Madam Mayor, if I could just, for a moment, it's not a question of if we ban lawn, uh, leaf blowers. We've already banned leaf blowers. As of, as of October first, nineteen ninety-nine, the operation of gas-powered leaf blowers shall be prohibited in all residential zones. So we've already prohibited them in, in residential zones. So it's not a question as to whether we're going to prohibit them, we've already prohibited them. We haven't been enforcing the, the law very well, but tonight we have to decide, are we going to continue to prohibit them and direct our sheriff's department to continue to cite people, or are we going to ask that a moratorium on the citations be put into place until we can look at this a little closer? That's the first thing I want to say. The second thing is, is I can't, I just want to say to the people that, that came here tonight, that aren't usually here for city council meetings, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention because it's a very important issue to our city and it's a very important issue to your livelihoods. So thank you very much. And whenever issues like this come before you that we need to know about, please do not hesitate to come and talk to us about it. That's what we're, we're here for. So I think the first thing we have to decide is whether or not we're going to continue the enforcement and then look for ways to perhaps work together to modify the ordinance or whether we're going to continue to enforce the ordinance that's already there, which bans leaf blowers.
Yes, leaf blowers. Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Clapp?
Well, first of all, I think we need to have a moratorium on enforcement because this needs to be brought back before us because there's new technology that sounds like it might help the situation. That being said, clearly there's something about the noise of a leaf blower that for some reason is more annoying than a lawn mower or some, now Harley's another story. I'm not a fan of Harley's, I don't think anybody is, but other gardening equipment for some reason is not as annoying. I don't know what it is, I don't know if it's the tone or what. You strike up a leaf blower and I, I just feel my blood pressure go up. It's inexplicable. So this is truly a problem for people that are being subjected to the noise and we do need to address that. As far as the workers go, we talk about the health of people around us when we talk about the dust that gets raised up by these blowers. What about the workers? To me, this is another example of a working class group being subjected to bad health conditions because somebody's not willing to open their pocketbook up and pay you for the job that you're doing. That needs to be addressed as well. Why should you work for less because somebody else, and sacrifice your health because somebody isn't willing to pay you? I personally find that offensive. So it's not all about just the health of myself or the neighbor, it's about your health as well. And it's an environmental issue for me as well. I, I think everyone knows environment is, is very dear to me and I will always be speaking up for the environmental issues that are facing our, our country and our world. And when we go around and we blow up the, uh, the dirt underneath trees and disturb the leaves, we are doing severe damage to the environment, which as we know now is becoming very fragile with overpopulation, and this is something that we all need to address and be willing to change how we do things in order to do our part to help the world heal itself from the damage that we have caused. So to me, it's a very important thing to think about when we use these tools. So it's a two-pronged thing. Once is being willing to pay the individual for the work that they do and they deserve to be paid for and paid for well. And two, is to do work in a way and be paid so that you don't feel like you have to use something that damages the environment. This is the two things that I think we really need to address. I don't know how we're going to address them personally. I think Mayor, um, Mayor Protem Clapp, um, Smith, pardon me, idea of a total ban, it's a win-win. Because if nobody's using them, you're all in the same position, and if people need gardening service, believe me, they're going to pay you because they don't want to go out and do it themselves. It's just the way it is. You know? Get your kid to help you, get your crank kid to help you if you feel you need a little extra help. But believe me, they'll pay you. Believe me, they'll pay you. Never be afraid to think that you're not going to be paid for your work. So I think it's a serious issue. I don't know why, why they're so annoying to everyone, but they are. So I think it really does need to come back to before us and I really thank you for coming forward and speaking. I'm with Mayor, uh, past mayor, Councilwoman Blatt that we always want to hear from people and I'm glad you came forward and brought it to our attention and I hope we can come up with a resolution.
I think it's always a good idea to review our, our ordinances, our laws that we've put in place to see if they're valid now, to see if they accomplish our intent when they were originally passed. And we did ban gas leaf blowers in certain areas, certain residential areas, but I also agree that we, it, it's wise to review the ordinance and it sounds like the majority of our council agrees that we, we should review the ordinance and it also sounds like the majority of our council agrees we should suspend enforcement while we're doing that. And so I agree also. And when we're reviewing the ordinance, we have improved technology, we need to look at the pros and cons, we need to look at both sides of the issues. The, the people who earn their living through landscaping, et cetera, and the residents who, who have difficulty with the dust, et cetera. So we need to look at the pros and cons and, and we also should look at, if we're going to ban, ban leaf blowers, we should include lawn mowers and hedge trimmers, et cetera. So I, I don't think there's an equity in banning one piece of equipment, but not all of the equipment that makes noise and is unpleasant and puts dust in the air. And my, my, personally, my, my greatest concern would be environmental and health. So I think that's about it. Do we need to, do you have direction from council?
So my understanding is that you're directing us not to enforce the existing leaf blower ordinance until you've had an opportunity to review the leaf blower ordinance?
Correct.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I don't want this to end up buried deep behind the eighteen gazillion other things that we have put before you. So do you have any idea, a timeframe?
So at, at the next city council meeting, I promise to come back to you with a work plan to address the eighteen items that we discussed at the last council meeting. And, and we are putting that together and you'll have the ability to adjust it. So if, if our proposal isn't right, you can always tell us to accelerate something and decelerate something else.
Madam Mayor, I just have one more comment. It's just kind of a, something to throw out for the people in the audience to think about. And I don't know the answer to it, but I, it's something to think about. We've had an ordinance that said that you shouldn't be using, and it was against the law to use gasoline leaf blowers in residential areas. And that hasn't caused anybody to stop for the most part. Everybody in my neighborhood, landscapers and homeowners, all use them. And I think that from, from the standpoint of landscaping as a business, you're using them because it's, it's fast, it's sufficient, you get the job done, and everybody else is doing it, so they're getting the job done faster and everything. But I want to, I want you to just give some thought to it, that what if all of you agreed not to use them? So that you, everyone would be in the same boat of not, of not using leaf blowers, then wouldn't that put you in the same position you are now with everybody using leaf blowers? And for those of you that know that somebody's using it, bring peer pressure on them not to use them. I don't know, it's just something to throw out because it seems to me that why would you ever stop using a leaf, a gasoline leaf blower when everybody else is doing it? Because it's, it's, it's fast and it's, it's fast and you get the job done, you move on to the next job. But if nobody was using it, what effect would that really have on your businesses? I don't know the answer to that, but it's something to think about.
Madam Mayor, just one more comment also, and I definitely agree with that. Keeping an open mind is always important and you got to look at both sides of the situation. And that's what I've been trying to do because I have my own thoughts, but we need, as a community, we need public input. So inviting everybody at home that's listening to this, it's really important because these are important issues I think that we as a community could solve and we could have an understanding. So also out there, inviting the public because it's important to hear from everybody, but definitely health and safety are definitely a top priority for all of us, so thank you.
Madam Mayor, do we need a vote on the, the suspension of enforcement?
Oh, do we need a, a vote to suspend?
There's no harm in making a vote, so I would suggest it.
Yeah. Then Madam Mayor, I would move that we suspend until we can gather more information, suspend the enforcement of...
The leaf blower ordinance?
The leaf blower ordinance, which is section five dash eleven dash zero five, until further direction is received from the council. I wrote all of it. Uh, that's my motion.
Second. Roll call?
Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp? Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Okay. May I have five minutes to talk to the translator?
Okay.
Thank you. We're going to take about a five-minute break. Three minutes.
We're going to take about a five-minute break. 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 We're going to take about a five-minute break.
One of the affordability categories from extremely low up to moderate. HCD, in their letter to us, they said that they were concerned that that poses a constraint on housing development. One of the things that we talked about briefly at the Planning Commission meeting is that there are 100% affordable housing projects around Southern California when they are subsidized with grant funds, tax credits, and so forth. So, that's not an issue. It's not a problem having 100% affordable project when you have that kind of financial subsidy. But if the city is requiring a level of affordability and there's no assurance that there's going to be those grant funds, then that's what HCD has a problem with, making a market rate project pencil out. So what we've proposed is that the affordability schedule that's in the ordinance that was adopted be amended so that a total of 25% of the units would have to be affordable at a ratio of 10%, very low, 10%, low, 5% moderate. And this is pretty typical of what many cities have required in terms of affordability when they have an inclusionary or an affordability requirement. The next item, transitional supportive housing, this is a more or less black and white issue in state law. And so, when the original SPL was drafted, there were some uncertainties in terms of what state law would specifically require in our ordinance. And so, we've reviewed that again. We've looked at what other cities have done. And so, we've tweaked the language in the ordinance to conform the SPL to what is clearly required in state law. So this is a fairly cut and dried issue. And the last item on the list has to do with the second unit compliance program. This is not something that is a result of HCD's comments, but it's, as you recall, it went through the public discussion when the housing element was being prepared in the fourth cycle and then updated in the fifth cycle. So, that is a brief overview of what's contained in the ordinance. Staff and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have. Just to recap what we're asking for, this is an ordinance, so it requires two readings. Tonight is the introduction, or the first reading of the ordinance. We're recommending that you conduct a public hearing tonight, and then it would require a second reading prior to final adoption. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does counsel have any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, thank you. I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the counsel?
Yeah, just make one comment. Dale Hanson, other in the City of Ojai. Some time ago, we, meaning myself and others-
Dale, hold the microphone.
-myself and others, were told that Chapter 16 would be repealed. And I'm hoping that I get confirmation on that soon.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Is there, I see a hand back there. Give your name.
Helen Conley. I live in Oakview, but I'm here representing the Housing Committee of the Ojai Valley Democratic Club. I don't see any of our other members here, although Dale Hanson also speaks on our behalf often. My only question in hearing the presentation is that 65% changed to 25? That's, well, let's see, 65 being almost two-thirds, changing it to one-fourth? That's a huge change in the numbers and affordable units that you'd have to have for qualifying. That would be my comment. Just please look at that, council members. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, would you mind if I address that?
Okay.
the state doesn't want to have it be too many affordable units because then the developer won't make any money. So it really isn't about affordable housing, it's about housing development. That's one of the major, sort of, misnomers about the housing element and affordable housing, that it really isn't about affordable housing. It's about housing development and the profit of the housing developer.
Madam Mayor, I just have one question.
Well, what I'm looking at here is it says at the minimum, 10% of the total number
Where in the ordinance itself-
Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to speak to the counsel on
dwellings shall be developed as affordable housing for very low-income households, and
this issue? Then we'll close the public hearing and come back to the counsel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Where in the ordinance does it specifically say the 25%?
10% of the total number dwellings developed is affordable for low-income households,
Okay, Madam Mayor, members of the counsel, it's Section 5 of the ordinance, Pages 2-9,
and 5%. So is that where we're coming up with the 25?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. And at one point, we had that at 60%? Is that what our original plan was? Because I'm not seeing the red line.
2-10. That's on the top of Page 2-10 on your agenda.
Well, I'm looking at a strikeout, underlined version of the ordinance, but I can tell you that the current SPL requires 15%, extremely low, 15%, very low, 15%, low, and 20% moderate, so that there's a total of 65% affordable units. One other point that we would like to make is that some of the sites that are in your SPL overlay zone are owned by the city. And so, these are minimums, so that if the city owns a site, the city can negotiate for a higher percentage of affordability than this minimum that's proposed in the ordinance.
But when it came back from Sacramento, we were instructed to lower the percentages to this?
Sacramento is more cagey than that. They don't often specifically tell us what we need to change it to. They will use language like, "You should analyze this further as a possible constraint," and that's code language for, "You need to change it." I can give you an example. Shortly after the City of Goleta Incorporated, 10, 12 years ago, whenever that was, in their first draft housing element, they imposed, they adopted a policy of having a similar inclusionary requirement because it was in sync with their RENA allocation. Well, HCD had the very same problem and refused to certify Goleta's housing element and told them they needed to analyze it as a constraint.
Okay. May I ask a follow-up question?
Well, I was just going to ask, the constraint being that they don't make any money.
Yes.
Developer.
A constraint to market rate development.
Right.
Well, the constraint would be that with an over, a higher percentage, nobody is going to build it.
Right, and I remember when this was first negotiated, when we talked about the higher percentage, because it's a value in this community to truly supply affordable housing, we felt that it was really important to have it be more affordable housing within these SPLs, which is why that was the proposal that was submitted. So basically, they show their hand, that it has nothing to do with affordable housing, nothing has to do with the developers and making money.
If I can editorialize just briefly, HCD's agenda is to stimulate the production of housing, particularly affordable housing, but all housing. And so, they take a look at requirements like this with an eye towards how it's going to affect housing production in general. So you might think, well, if we had a higher percentage of affordability, you would get more affordable units, but if fewer projects come forward because they don't pencil out, you wind up getting less housing.
I do have a brief comment, and that is, I'd like us to keep in mind that the need for affordable housing is a real need, but it's a social or a governmental issue. I don't believe it should be placed on the backs of developers.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to see Mr. Douglas, if he could also elaborate how we came up with the 10, 10 and 5, because I remember last time I had a question, why were we going from, basically, was 65 to 25? And if we could have kind of pushed the envelope, but if you could just refresh my memory, why we went with these numbers?
To be honest, I suggested those numbers when we were preparing the housing element based on my own familiarity and experience with other jurisdictions that have an inclusionary And so, and further, the suggested percentage breakdown here, the 25%, has been accepted by state HCD in many, many cities. And so, I have a high degree of confidence that they will accept that. Now, if you asked me to say, "Where is the line?", you know, "Could it be 28% or 35%?" I can't tell you where that line is, but clearly, they felt that 65% is beyond the line. And so, I reached back into my memory banks and looked at other cities and what they have adopted, and 25% is fairly common for cities that do have an inclusionary requirement.
Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to ask a couple of questions about the history of this. If I recall correctly, this requirement was first recommended by the Planning Commission and included, I think, in the Cycle 4 housing element and therefore included in the ordinance. But then, when it was questioned in the Cycle 5 element, the Planning Commission reviewed that and basically acknowledged that what they had proposed originally was too restrictive and agreed that this was an appropriate approach after talking with you. And I think that we then changed the Cycle 5 housing element, and this is just conforming to what we've already adopted as part of the Cycle 5 element that we submitted to the state.
Yes, that is right.
Madam Mayor, just for some clarity, just recalling Cycle 4, wasn't there a case going where, or was that for rent? Where we decided to not involve putting percentages on one of our programs? I thought it was inclusionary. I thought it was this, to be honest with you, when we talked about the percentage of affordable housing, or was that more for affordable rent?
I'm sorry, I don't recall. I recall that situation, but I don't recall specifically what it related to, and I think Mr. Douglas was not working with this.
No, he wasn't working with us. It was our other consultant. But I remember putting that on hold because there was a case going on in LA, and I thought this was-
If I can, Madam Members of the Council, that was the issue about straight inclusionary housing. This is our, am I correct, this is our SPL?
Yes.
So, these standards apply to anybody who wants to exercise their rights under the SPL for, under the overlay zone for affordable housing. What we still have not, what we had put on hold was a straight inclusionary ordinance required all development irrespective of SPL or otherwise, to include a level of affordable housing, because the Supreme Court had thrown out Los Angeles's inclusionary ordinance. At the time, we were hopeful, there was legislation, or the legislation up in Sacramento, that would have put it, authorized it. Unfortunately, that legislation, I think, was vetoed by the governor?
It was, yeah, it was vetoed by the governor.
Actually, the governor vetoed it, passed the legislature, and the governor vetoed it. So, we're still back at keeping that issue on ice until we get some clear authorization from the legislature. And unfortunately, and the case wasn't reviewed by the Supreme Court, so maybe another piece of litigation will come through. Otherwise, our recommendation still is to wait on inclusionary ordinance until we get some legislative authorization. But that, this is just for SPL-zoned properties.
And I, to respond to Dale Hanson's question earlier, Page 2-13, Section 8, Title 10, Chapter 16 of the Ojai Municipal Code is hereby repealed in its entirety. That is the one, that's the section that would have required building reports.
The report of residential building records, yes.
Any other questions from counsel?
I just have one question. What if, if we wanted to say, change these to, instead of 25%, we wanted to make it 35%? Or 40%? Is that, is that something that we risk it going back to Sacramento and having problems with at 40%?
I can tell you what the process would be. I can't tell you what the outcome would be, because I can't anticipate what HCD thinks. The process is, if you would like to make that change to the ordinance, we would make it, we would adopt it, we would send it up to HCD. They are currently reviewing the housing element, and we've alerted them that this ordinance is making its way through the process, and so we've asked them to hold off on their final review letter, which is due next month, until they have a chance to review the housing element in concert with this ordinance. So if it's your pleasure to increase that number, we would do that, send it up to HCD and see what they say.
I have a follow-up question to that. If we approve the ordinance with the 10, 10, 5, and we had a developer, could the counsel or whichever body, could we still negotiate with that developer for a higher percentage of affordable housing?
If it's a city-owned property, absolutely. If it's privately owned, I'm trying to think of the situations that would open the door to the city negotiating. If, for example, if a developer asks for a density bonus over and above the 20 units per acre that's allowed under the SPL, then that opens the door to the city negotiating for a higher percentage.
Okay, but if we had a project, we couldn't use our desire for greater affordable housing as a tool to approve or deny the project?
And now, I'm going to work in concert with the city attorney in answering that. One of the requirements that controls the SPL is what's called by right approval. So it's not a discretionary approval process. If the project meets all the standards, you know, the setbacks, the height limit, the affordability requirements, then the city has to approve the project. But if they want the benefit of a density bonus, then that kind, that opens the door to a negotiation on additional affordability.
And Madam Mayor, if I could add to that also, to the extent, we can use, again, we're hoping there's going to be some additional economic development money post-redevelopment around or available. If we also have tax credits available or other investment money to add to the project, to offer, to partner on the project, then we can also negotiate for a higher, higher percentage. It's all driven by the perception of, you know, return on the investment for the developer. So no, we couldn't just impose it, we couldn't make it as a condition of approval of an over, of a SPL project. But we can find means of finding, putting together with the housing, with the regional housing authority, and putting together with tax credit investors to try to help raise additional capital, which then would allow us to negotiate a higher percentage.
Any other comments?
Madam Mayor, I do have one more question. I know we're talking about this occupancy standard, and going back to what Council Member Platt said, if we could possibly add 10% more to affordable housing, whether it's very low, low, or wherever we fit the numbers, I really respect your reasoning, why you came up with these numbers. I feel like we should be really careful, and we've gone this far, and I know we want the housing element to pass, and we want to be certified, and that's what we've been working for. But in your opinion, do you think leveling 10% would not be approved by the state? Or have you seen, because I know that you said that you tried to see what other city had. Did you see any other cities having 35% that were certified? Or, or could you recall that? I mean, but at the same time, I want to be really cautious and not push the envelope too much, because we've gone this far, and I understand that we shouldn't put our developers in the bind, but at the same time, our values of this community is about affordable housing for seniors or for families. But I just want to see if we could kind of find a balance, or just your thoughts about it.
If I were a betting man, I would have to say that I think there is a fair chance that HCD might accept a 35% requirement. There isn't a bright line in the law on this issue. It is a judgment call. And so, cities work with HCD. HCD gives their opinion, cities modify to try to strike something that will be accepted by HCD. So, I honestly can't tell you any more than that at this point.
Let me ask you this. In our process, does that give us enough time if we were to add 10%? Would that give us enough time for them to send back maybe a letter and us to readjust those numbers if they were to do that?
Since this is the first reading tonight, one option for us might be to, if it's the pleasure of your counsel, to increase those numbers, 35% or something similar. And then, between now and the second reading, we could try to have a consultation with state HCD and get a better reading as to how they would react to that. And then if we get, during the interim between now and the second meeting, if we get a strong reaction from HCD to the negative, then we could report back to you at the next meeting with that. And if, you know, on the other hand, if HCD does not express their opposition to it, then it would be fine.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Well, with redevelopment gone, the fact is, I guess it was, gosh, it could almost be a year ago now, but we invited people self-help up here. They toured all the city-owned properties and looked at what we could offer them, city-owned properties. And of course, our main impetus was to service our very low and low-income residents. And they couldn't pull together a package, even though we're offering them city-owned land, that in any way we could come up with the money we would need. So, I was left with a feeling without redevelopment, we're sort of, don't have much to offer. So to say, "Let's make a developer offer higher standards," we've had no offers. We have not built a single unit of affordable housing since the Fulton Street Development, which is before I was in office, or the first year I was in office. So that's the reality of the situation. I mean, we would love to have a developer come in, especially, we own quite a few city lots, but even people self-help, we're not able to come up with a package. So why put further requests if a private developer is able to come up with a package? I don't want to put further obstacles in a developer's path with what our current requirements, when we could not come up with a package where we actually physically own the property. So I would hesitate to do that. Councilman Laura.
And I do have sort of a follow-up comment to the one I made earlier, and that is, you know, any unit can be an affordable unit if there is adequate subsidy, if there's adequate state, federal, city money to generate it. What I am cautious about is our attempt to have a developer, a private developer, bear that burden.
Madam Mayor?
Did you have-
Two thoughts. One is, we're talking about the overlay district. They don't have to use the overlay district. A developer could go in there and put no affordable housing on that property. We are giving the landowner an opportunity to have another option for his or her land, which would include affordable housing. And if we're going to do that option, I'm not, I'm not happy with only 25% of the, of that project being affordable housing. I think at the very minimum, it should be a third instead of a quarter. If they want to do market rate housing, they're more than welcome to do it. We're putting an overlay on it as an additional option to them if they want to do something that would include affordable housing to their benefit. And I think if we're going to do that, then we should insist on it being a higher percentage than 25%.
Madam Mayor? Hold. Councilmember Laura?
Sorry.
That's all right.
I mean, clap. Just as a follow-up to you guys, that was my same thought process was, but special overlays are supposed to encourage affordable housing, and if we're only, say it's only 25%, it's kind of defeats the purpose of doing affordable housing. It's all market value, there's, it's no benefit to our community. That was, that was my only thing. I mean, I know 65% could be overly burdened, but to a developer, if they don't have any help from the state or federal government, but I just, there's, 65 to 25%, I think there's still some game that we could play, and if we saw, if time allows it, and if we could send it up to state, have them return a statement, I mean, I think we should do that.
Councilmember Clapp?
Just a little editorial comment is that it's, the developer in an affordable housing project isn't necessarily burdened either, because quite often they have federal monies and subsidies and tax breaks. They get environmental considerations, they get excused if 25% of a project or 15%, as little as 15% of a project is affordable, they get a good out-of-gel-free card with SEQA. So, they have plenty of incentives. So, I don't really look at it as a burden to them at all. And as far as increasing the percentage, maybe we could, you know, maybe 25 doesn't seem like enough, 35 is maybe getting a little sketchy, maybe, maybe 30. Just a thought.
Any other comments, counsel?
Well, I guess I could already make a motion that if, if we're all done with discussion, and I'm taking into consideration that we did put 65%, so I may be pushing the envelope. So we'll see. First of all, I recommend, do I have to say the first part, conducted public hearing?
No.
No. To introduce an ordinance adopting the housing element as revised, amending Section, I guess, would be, do I have to go by the ordinance section?
If you just, I think if you just, you're talking about the subsection.
Subsection-
10-2704G. Section 5.
Okay, amending Section 10-2.704.
G1A.
Is that right? No.
If you identify the section for us, we can make the- excused if 25% of a project or 15%, as little as 15% of a project is affordable. They get a good out-of-gel-free card with SEQA. So, they have plenty of incentives. So, I don't really look at it as a burden to them at all. And as far as increasing the percentage, maybe we could, you know, maybe 25 doesn't seem like enough. 35 is maybe getting a little sketchy. Maybe 30. Just a thought.
Any other comments, council?
Well, I guess I could already make a motion that if, if we're all done with discussion, and taking into consideration that we did put 65%, so I may be pushing the envelope. So we'll see. First of all, I recommend, do I have to say the first part, conducted public hearing?
No.
Oh, no. To introduce an ordinance, adopting the housing element as revised, amending section, I guess, would be, do I have to go by the ordinance section?
If you just, I think if you just, you're talking about the subsection.
Subsection.
10-2704G.
Two.
Section 5.
Okay, amending section 10-2.704.
G1A.
Is that right? No.
If you identify the section for us, we can make the motion work.
Okay. Oh, it's revised affordability provision.
Yeah.
Currently, 15% extremely low, 15% very low, 50% low, and 20% moderate, with 30% to 50% senior, to 15% very low, 15% low, and 5% moderate. And ask the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
Second.
Rule call. Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
And I need to read the title of the ordinance, which is, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ojai, California, Amending Article 7 of Chapter 2 of Title 10 of the Ojai Municipal Code Related to Implementation of the 2014-2021 Housing Element of the Ojai General Plan."
The next item on our agenda is a request to construct one water well at 541 Buckboard Lane.
Mr. Grant will be making an extremely brief report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Yes, an extremely, a relatively brief public hearing. As per view and consider approval of a water well application, this well application is a private residence at the 541 Buckboard Lane, which is up in the Persimmon Hill tract. The proposed use of the well is for landscaping and garden irrigation. The estimated annual water demand of the well is one acre foot per year. As background, the county does provide required engineering inspection for these wells. The local water agencies, including Casitas and Miners Oaks and the Ojai Groundwater Basin Management Agency, were all informed, and as well as Golden State Water, Ojai flow of this public hearing, and I don't believe in, we've received no objections to date made during the hearing. These water wells, this water well falls within the SEQA guideline exemptions, and the county is ready to review and consider issuance of a permit if it's approved by the council tonight. And I should mention, the local Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency has reviewed the application and has no objections. And as their primary purpose is to preserve the quantity and quality of the water within the Ojai Groundwater Basin Management Agency, area. And with that, I now suggest that you conduct the public hearing and receive testimony relative to this well.
Any comments from council? All right, we'll open the public hearing. I don't have any speaker cards. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address this issue? Then I'll close the public hearing. Council?
There isn't any discussion, Madam Mayor. I will move that we accept the determination that environmental study is not required, consistent with the exceptions noted in the SEQA Section 15303, and receive and approve the application for the water well submitted by Russell and Mary Drummond at 541 Buckboard Lane.
Second.
Rule call. Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
No.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Strobel?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is anticoagulant.
Rodenticides.
Thank you, rodenticides. Mr. Clark?
I believe we've indicated we'd start by allocating time to the citizens who brought this forward to make a presentation.
Okay, good evening. We're glad we were finally able to speak to you about this issue. Sue Williamson of the Ojai Wildlife League, and I, Patty Pageling of Transition to Organics, are here tonight with the support of many community members that are not present, to present information and to ask the city council to consider adopting a resolution against anticoagulant rodenticides. We want to thank the poison-free Malibu people and the Raptors Are the Solution organization for letting us use their slides and giving us all the information that we need.
Oops. Oh, there we go. There, yeah. So, this slide illustrates the new silent spring crisis that is threatening our wildlife. And it shows the chain of death, and how rodenticides are consumed by small animals and then larger animals, snakes, raptors, et cetera. The EPA says that approximately 10,000 children a year are accidentally exposed to mouse and rat baits also. And they're also a leading cause of pet deaths. New rodenticides, which are called second-generation rodenticides, that are coming out, have ramped up the damage considerably. Some people are saying, well, the first generation aren't as so bad, but they've had to increase them because they develop a resistance. So they're getting worse and worse. And they found that bobcats have really suffered a lot. Their rate of survival has fallen off the table starting in 2002, and that's when those new rodenticides came out. So our goal is to raise consciousness and awareness about these, this crisis, and educate homeowners, merchants, institutions, and governments. And when people find out about it, usually when they learn about this information, they usually choose not to poison.
Also, I just wanted to add that the rats, the rodents, become immune, but the larger animals do not. It has to do with how prolific and how short a lifespan the rodents have. So when you're talking about the effect on the larger animals, it's completely different. Am I supposed to, okay. So, in looking at some of the really gruesome facts and figures, the coyotes that were examined, 83% were exposed to rodenticides in Santa Monica Mountains. And this is from a study done by the National Park Service and UCLA. And the rodenticide poisoning is the second-leading cause of coyote deaths, after accidents, fatality on the roads. Bobcats, 92% exposed to rodenticides in a five-county study in Southern California. The National Park Service states that our research suggests an interaction between anticoagulant rodenticide exposure and death from mange, and mange deaths result in the complete loss of bobcats from many open space areas in the Conejo Valley. Mountain lions, out of 104 tested California-wide, 82 contained rodenticides, with 78% containing more than one kind. And the two Simi Valley mountain lions that we'll show photos of died directly from rodenticide exposure. A young female mountain lion in 2012 was found dead by hikers in Point Mugu State Park with rodenticides in her system. Owls and hawks are really deeply affected by this. 90% of, 92% of raptors collected in San Diego County and 79% collected in the Central Valley contained anticoagulant rodenticides. The other way? Am I doing it wrongly?
There. So that's a picture of a bait box. And people have the misconception that the animal goes in there and stays in there. But no, it eats the food, it wanders out, starts, it's very easy prey after that, because it slowly dies. It doesn't immediately die. So bait boxes are particularly bad.
You said it's this button, right?
It must be the wrong button. Yeah, you got to point that one.
So this is a picture of a beautiful Griffith Park bobcat.
And this is the same bobcat after it's been poisoned.
There it is.
Oh, okay. There's the bobcat. And then this is a mountain lion, healthy mountain lion.
Okay. So this is the young female cougar that died in 2004, within weeks of her mate. And they have designations of P3 and P4. The biologists attribute both the deaths to ingestion of anticoagulant rodenticides.
And that's the mountain lion after it's been poisoned.
Sorry.
Go ahead. No, no.
Sorry.
I'm going to do this.
You do it.
Okay.
It's going the bad.
This is really not working right. Sorry. It goes everywhere, all over the place. It doesn't have any rhyme or reason to it. Sorry, folks. Okay, there we go.
Okay. Another gruesome picture. It's a coyote with internal bleeding from anticoagulant rodent poison. It's going backwards.
Okay. Ah, and there is a healthy little fox. I've seen foxes around here. And they are being poisoned.
This is someone's pet who passed on due to poisoning from rodenticides.
And then here's another domestic cat. They often suffer from death as a result of eating poisoned mice and rats.
So in May 2008, after a 10-year study, EPA declared that rodenticides pose unreasonable adverse risks to wildlife and the environment. There's something else.
Something missing here.
There we go. Then in 2013, the EPA proposed canceling registration of 20 rodenticides. And then, the company that makes DECON, Reckitt Benkaiser, challenged the EPA ruling, and so there, it may take another two years or more of hearings.
So in other words, they're going to be left on the shelf for at least another two years because of this fellow Reckitt Benkaiser's.
It's a company.
Legal suit. He's, is that a company?
It's two different companies.
Oh, okay, okay. Anyway, so let's see, where are we here? I think we missed something, but, okay. Here's an owl, and they eat 1,000 rodents in a year, which is a lot of rodents. So you can see how they are highly affected by the poison.
So, in summary, anticoagulants caused great harm, I think you have to press it again, in terms of human health, mortality of pets and wildlife, and environmental degradation. And they've created resistant rat populations within 10 years of using the poison. And they destroy the predators that are the most useful for controlling rats.
So here is a fellow, he's, rats, raptors, rodenticides, and rats. Rat stands for, raptors are the solution. And we need to let these owls, hawks, and other predators do their job and play their role in the food web. And here's a fellow volunteering to clean up your rodent problem.
Volunteer.
For free.
One red-shouldered hawk can kill 30 rodents in one month. We don't need DECON.
Yeah, isn't that clever? Okay.
It's also a very painful death, too.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So now, here are some of the government actions against rodenticides. 19 California cities and counties have passed resolutions opposing rodenticides, but only the state can regulate them. So your role is limited to just opposing the use. You can't actually, I gather, ban the use or regulate the use of them. California Department of Pesticide Regulation projected for July 2014, a ban for consumer purchase and use of second-generation anticoagulants. So, it's sort of limited. It's only for consumers, and it's only for second generation. And then, there's a proposal in LA County Santa Monica Mountains Local Coastal Program, that the use of insecticides, herbicides, and anticoagulant rodenticides, or any toxic chemical substance which has the potential to significantly degrade biological resources in the Santa Monica Mountains, shall be prohibited except where necessary to protect or enhance the habitat itself.
So, some encouraging news is that merchants do cooperate when they learn the facts. In Malibu, Calabasas, and Agoura Hills, these stores and, yes, these stores have agreed not to sell the rodenticides.
I want to go back for a second, because I realize I didn't say that the California Coastal Commission has permit language that says, "Rodenticides containing any anticoagulant compounds, including, but not limited to," and then there's these names, and some of those are actually first and some are second-generation rodenticides, "shall not be used on the property." So they've taken a pretty strong position on this stuff. And then also, the Santa Monica Group is trying to explore ways of using, of eliminating the use of rodenticides at the soonest practical date, and identify and promote rodent control methods that are not going to involve poisons. I didn't read that part, so, okay.
So, I think that's yours.
Oh, mine, all right. What is it? So, the sources of rodent poison, household consumers purchase and use a lot. And the projected ban by California Department of Pesticide Regulation by July 2014 is, as we said, it's sort of being held up, but it's, it's.
Well, that's actually the California Department.
Oh, that's different, okay.
That's different than the EPA. The EPA's been held.
So the California Department is not been challenged?
Right.
Okay. And the other people that use a lot of it is pest control services in homes and businesses. And they use bait boxes. And a lot of people believe the rodents get trapped, but they don't. They exit and continue the chain of death. And the pest control services actually make money by coming out and periodically refilling these boxes. This goes on in housing complexes, homes, yards, shopping centers, restaurants, movie theaters, schools, businesses, office complexes. Agriculture is also a big user of these bait boxes. And I'm sure they're out in our avocado groves in Ojai, and in the orange groves, and vineyards, et cetera.
So, the solution is that we don't have to take the bait. We can clean up, remove habitat, do rodent-proofing, and use traps. The City of Malibu Parks and Recreation hasn't used rodenticides in several years. They have an IPM, earth-friendly management. They clean up. They do habitat modification and trapping without poison. And so, it's really unnecessary. We just have to kind of rethink how we want to handle things, so we don't hurt the wildlife and our pets and our children.
So here's an example of what produces the rodent problem, is dumpsters. And I've seen a lot of And I've seen a lot of dumpsters and a lot of trashcans. They also attract bears, um, in Ojai that are not secured. And this is, uh, I think we, we need some public education on this issue, and some cooperation also from the, uh, uh, garbage people. Um, here's an example of a broken bait box, and that's how a lot of times children and pets get poisoned by these bait boxes. They're sort of chintzy little things, and they get knocked over, the stuff falls out, then it's no longer even protected from children and pets.
Right, so going over, uh, the way to control rodents, habitat modification, sealing up holes in buildings, cleaning up, doing screening, removing the source, uh, that would attract them, the, the food waste, um, then have a commercial rodent proofing company come out and, and take care of things, do live snap or electronic traps, use repellents, and of course, if we weren't poisoning the rodents, we could have barn owls, uh, take care of things, and a lot of people wanna put up barn, uh, owl boxes, but you can't do it if you're poisoning the rodents. Um, and for more information, these websites that are listed are, would be very helpful. Urban carnivores dot com, raptors are the solution dot org, safe rodent control, and earth-friendly management dot com.
So there's quite a few, and this is just a very partial list of individuals and organizations that are actively concerned, um, State Senator Fran Pavely, County Supervisor Linda Parks, Los Angeles County Supervisor Zev Yuroslavsky, uh, the National Park Service, California Wildlife Center, California Department of Pesticide Regulation, California Department of Fish and Wildlife.
So, we are requesting a resolution urging the businesses in the city of Ojai to no longer use or sell anticoagulant rodenticides?
We are also asked urging all property owners to cease purchasing or using anticoagulant rodenticides on their properties.
And included in the resol- a resolution, uh, to solidify the city's commitment to not using anticoagulant rodenticides as part of its maintenance program for city-owned parks, open space, and facilities. And, well, this is just, uh, thanking the, the Raptors Are The Solution, uh, people that helped us out with all of the slides.
And now we would like you to hear some friends of ours, uh, do a little song for y'all.
Show load it.
Okay, now, here we go. For a long time, us raptors had a job to do. We've controlled the rodents 'cause the rodents are our food, but now they're poisoning the rodents, they're poisoning our food. Yeah, they're killing the rodents, boy, they're killing us too. So let us just do our job, controlling the rodents like we have all along. Yeah, you poison the rodents, you poison our food. Yeah, you're killing them rodents, but you're killing us too.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions from council?
No.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Clapp?
I'd just like to hear if anybody else has any comments from the public.
Well, I met with, um, Sue and Patty last week, and I no longer remember what day, but, um, I spent quite a bit of time, I received a lot of information, I read the information. They had emailed me, uh, quite a bit. So I don't have many questions, uh, but I, it was, it was conscious raising, because it's something that a lot of us simply don't think about, about the poison going into our, our food supply. So I don't have any questions, but then I, I had quite a bit of information.
Could, could I just say that at the time we prepared this, we had not had time to do much research, and we've done a little bit since then. Mr. Grant has talked to our, um, pest control vendor, and there are substitute, um, substitutes that they can use, so I don't think there's any problem with us not using it at city facilities. And I also understand that the, um, resolution that was passed by, um, the city of Malibu, which, uh, we provided to you, has been passed by a number of other cities as well.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I might bring up that, uh, being part of, uh, Ven- Ventura County Organization of Governments, V-Cog, uh, this is a situation that has affected all of the city members of that organization, particularly, uh, cities like Thousand Oaks that have noticed a, uh, significant, uh, death rate amongst the animals of the Santa Monica Mountains, uh, throughout, and, and it's one of the issues that's, that Thousand Oaks and Simi Valley particularly have brought forward to the cog for discussion, and it's at the top of our list for, for a recommendation with regard to a, uh, prohibition on, on the use of it. So I know that it's not, uh, something localized to Ojai or to Southern California. I think it's, it's a well-known fact that when you get these rodenticides into, into the food chain, it affects a lot of things. And I, for one, would like to see us come up with a, whatever type of a resolution we can, uh, to keep our city from using the rodenticides, as well as to recommend to our businesses and homeowners that they not be used. And I thought that the, uh, the model ordinance that I saw in our packet seemed to, seemed to work fine.
Uh, I would agree with that. In fact, I would welcome a motion to that effect.
And before anyone makes a motion, I'll, I'll just mention again that this is, this is a resolution in opposition to the use of...
Rodenticides. But it would control, it would include us sending a letter to our merchants who sell these type of products, that we would highly recommend they don't even carry.
Uh, we would recommend to our merchants that they carry rodenticides that are not based on anticoagulants.
I'd like to respond to that. One of the conversations I had with, uh, Patty and Sue was what they might expect the city of Ojai to do, and the outreach to the merchants are something that their group would be taking on. It's not an outreach that would, the city would be doing.
No, we would just recommend that they don't carry it, but the outreach could be private, right?
Yes.
Uh, Madam Mayor, just a quick question to Mr. Fletcher. Is, is it, uh, something that we can recommend in the form of a resolution without it being a public hearing?
Yes, you don't, does not require a public hearing, but you could, even without, we don't have a pre-drafted one, but I would be comfortable with you offering a resolution, and we prepare one, um, substantially similar to the, uh, Malibu Resolution, substitute, of course, to Ojai for that.
Then I'd like to make a motion that we approve a resolution of the City Council of the city of Ojai opposing the sale, purchase, and use of anticoagulant rodenticides in Ojai.
Second.
Roll call. Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
And I'd like to thank, uh, I'd like to thank Sue and Patty for bringing this to our attention in the follow-through.
Okay, our next item is the Transportation Development Act, TDA, Article III Bicycle Pedestrian Fund Grant for fiscal year 2014, 2015. Mr. Clark?
Mr. Grant will update you on this grant.
Mr. Grant?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, you may recall at the last meeting, uh, we had the grant application, uh, that was put on, pulled off a consent item, and, uh, there was this concern from some of the Grand Avenue residents that we may, uh, have already made a decision that we're gonna put, uh, remove parking from one side of the street and, and add the bike lanes, uh, to both sides, creating the extra space. And, uh, that, uh, they were very concerned, and we decided to pull it from the agenda, and it gave us a little time to go through it. There was luckily an extension from VCTC, who handles the grant applications, and it worked out pretty well. So we did, uh, the next night, or next afternoon, there was a Complete Streets Committee, uh, committee meeting, and, uh, quite a few residents from Grand Avenue came in, and we explained the process that this was, uh, a lot of options would be considered for the Grand Avenue bike lane, and that, uh, it's not a given, there'll be plenty of public outreach. We assured them about the public outreach and explained what the basic options were already in, in design concept right now. So they were very relieved to hear about that, and, and, uh, and had no concerns beyond that. And, uh, so since then, we have had further contact with VCTC and discussed trying to, strategies to try to make sure this, uh, application is, is accepted. And, uh, there was a concern that we, you may recall, last time was a $120,000 approximate project, and we were looking, considering a 20% match. So now, VCTC gives, uh, extra points in scoring if you go to a 50% match. This is considered a very high dollar amount, there's only $500,000 available. So the suggestion from VCD, VCTC for better, uh, chances of being successful, we might have become a little overly confident, 'cause in the past couple of years, we have been successful in these grants, uh, but they're more in the $50,000 range as we were requesting in the past. So, uh, can, considering we're about 1% of the county population, uh, you know, that would be, some people look at it as a share of that 500,000, be like $5,000 per year. So this would be way beyond that. Even the $50,000 we've been getting for a couple of years have been way beyond that. So we are proposing as a change here that we go to a 50% match on $120,000, uh, project, proposed project, and, uh, and that you, uh, I think you're fairly aware of what the concept is, that, uh, we provide, uh, bike lanes on Grand Avenue, and I think we're trying to take advantage and leverage the intersection at Grand Avenue, Summer and Signal, that's out of alignment right now, and has always been, been considered a serious, uh, tran- transportation problem within the city, and that we correct that issue and kind of leverage this grant to help us out with that. So it's a great way to try to bring in some extra funding for the infrastructure improvements we need. So that's, that's the concept. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Thank you. Council's pleasure.
Well, if there's no discussion, I'm ready to make a mo...
You can make a, you can discuss.
Or, a motion, or, I, I don't have any questions.
And it didn't look like there were any questions. So if you wanna go ahead and make a motion?
Yeah, I reckon, do, do we need to open public hearing first, or?
It's not a public hearing.
Oh, it's not a public, oh, sorry about that. So I, I, to recommend, to authorize the city managers to submit a TDA, Article III Bicycle slash Pedestrian Fund Grant, application to the Ventura County Transportation Commission, VCTC, for the Grand Avenue to Signal Street Bike Lane Project as described in this, in this report.
Second with discussion. I, I'd have the second with...
Councilmember Clapp?
Um, I just have a question for Greg. When you mentioned, um, realigning Grand, Signal, and Summer, are, are you planning on, uh, cutting through that city-owned property that's there, the vacant land, or is it, or what, or do you have any idea yet?
The alignment is you go up Grand Av- Grand Av- I mean, sorry, Signal Avenue is you go up north.
Yeah.
And, uh, you're in the right-hand lane heading north, of course, and at that intersection, you, you directly inters- you, you come straight at the southbound traffic coming off of Grand.
Correct.
So that you have to take that upper section above Summer and move it over to the west, about, uh, 20 feet, so that those intersections align properly. You wouldn't, you wouldn't adjust the signal portion below Summer, 'cause there's the, uh, there, there's no movement there, so, and, uh, so...
Oh, okay, good.
We, we would suggest we're trying to do this, you know, at a reasonable price, so we'd probably leave the curb on the east side the way it is, but on the west side, we'd move the curb over.
And you still have that really nice open space there with the...
Right, it's all city property already.
Quasi-park.
It wouldn't require any, any, yeah, acquisition of land or anything.
Good, good, I'm glad to hear that. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments?
Roll call. Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatt, did you have a comment, and I cut you off?
Oh, no, I didn't. Not on this, I have, I have another comment later for Mr. Grant.
Our, our next item on the agenda is the mid-year budget review.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Um, generally, at this time of the year, when we finish the first six months of the fiscal period, we take a look and see if we're tracking, or if we need to make adjustments. And the bottom line of this report is that we are tracking in that whatever losses there are in one source of revenue, there's gains in other sources of revenue to offset it. However, I, I did note that we were surprised by the, um, sales tax receipts, which are, which we believe indicate that our revenues are gonna be down about $150,000 in that particular category. Um, the way sales tax is reported, we get, um, advances every month, but reconciliations every quarter, and, and there's a lag in quarter. So really, the, the results that we have for this six-month period really just represent one quarter. And what happened both in Ojai and statewide is that sales tax has been climbing, and for some reason, it leveled off. And I don't think anybody really has a very good handle on why that is yet. So it's, it's worrisome, but I don't, there's no need to make any changes to our budget right now as a result of it. But if that trend continues, it certainly will impact what we're able to do in the next fiscal year, um, 2014, 15. Um, basically, the, the loss in sales tax was covered by additional property taxes we got from the dissolution of redevelopment, and we had not estimated receiving any of that money because it was so uncertain as to what was gonna happen. But in fact, they didn't let us repay our loan, and so a lot more money was passed through to us and other agencies from the former redevelopment agency, and that pretty much offsets the sales tax loss. So that's, that's our summary. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from council?
Looks like we're pretty right. Pretty much we're where we thought we'd be, except for this $241, but other than that, we're doing fine.
So this is just a receive and file, no action is, is required of, of the council. Okay, and I have just hit a mental block, so if I do this incorrectly, help me out here. We're going to adjourn the city council meeting and convene the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency meeting.
Madam Mayor, I, I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that. Roll call. Blatt?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Okay, and now we'll con- reconvene the city council meeting. Um, oral reports from the city manager?
Um, I have nothing to offer tonight.
Any council members?
I, uh, just have one, one comment, and I spoke with Mr. Grant about it, but as you know, there's a lot of, uh, sidewalk work being done. And one part of the sidewalk was being done right outside my office, which it sounded like, uh, uh, my building was gonna be torn down with a jackhammer for most of the day one day. But that's not...
All day.
But Mr. Grant got the work done swiftly. But there's been some phone calls that I've received, um, from people who have said, "Why in the world is the city spending money on sidewalks when our roads are in such terrible shape?" And I can understand that, but I've assured them that it's because the money being spent on the sidewalks is from a grant in which it can only be spent on the sidewalk, and has nothing to do with our infrastructure road maintenance. And if our sidewalks are getting repaired before our road maintenance, well, that's just because this money was earmarked for that. So for people that, that are listening... But there's been some phone calls that I've received from people who have said, "Why in the world is the city spending money on sidewalks when our roads are in such terrible shape?" And I can understand that, but I've assured them that it's because the money being spent on the sidewalks is from a grant in which it can only be spent on the sidewalk, and it has nothing to do with our infrastructure road maintenance. And if our sidewalks are getting repaired before our road maintenance, well, that's just because this money was earmarked for that. So for people that are listening to this at home, that's the reason why the sidewalks are being done, and it does seem a little odd, if you don't realize that, that you would think the city was spending money on sidewalks rather than the roads, but that's not the case.
Madam Mayor, isn't on the city website a list of the roads we're repaving? It's still there, isn't it? So people can look it up there, because we are repaving roads.
Any other comments?
Yes. As your self-appointed public health officer, I'd like to report that there are 15 cases of regular measles reported in the state of California. Please check that your children have had their measles, mumps, rubella, their 12-year-old vaccine. This is not German measles, which is a bad disease for... if you're pregnant. This is real measles, which lands up kids in the hospital with encephalitis. It has trem... it's a horrible disease. So that just shows that there's enough kids who are not vaccinated that we now have 15 cases. So do check your child's vaccination records and make sure they've had their second MMR shot.
Councilmember Laura? Any other... City Clerk? Mr. Clark?
I have nothing, thank you.
I've gone blank again. It's time for me to go home, I can tell that. Mr. Fletcher? You're going to put me on the spot here. I remember your name, it's Dave Kenny. Kathleen? Mr. Grant?
I have one brief item. It's really good news, and that is we were notified today that we received a $200,000 grant for a new trolley. So I thought that was great, great news for us to... I think we have a pretty good-conditioned fleet right now, five pretty reasonable trolleys, three relatively new from the era funding. But this will be a really nice trolley for $200,000. It's a little more money we normally even have for trolleys, so we can take care of a few issues we have with those.
Ms. Mears?
Please attention.
Any comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, no additional business?
No.
Meeting adjourned.